Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest.
Good evening. It's being 6:30 PM on December 15th, 2021. I'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Westminster Select Board to order. And first off, an adjustment to the agenda. We, I would like to get a motion to create an executive session, which will include Chuck Lawrence of the Highway Department and the town manager to discuss employee contractual matters. And I have a motion for executive session.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, executive session has been established. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to the acceptance of minutes of December 8, 2021.
I'll second that.
Motion to accept the minutes as printed for December 8, 2021 has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes for December 8, 2021 are hereby adopted into the record. Thank you. Communications and public comments? Any communication and public comments? Anyone online? Okay, seeing none, we'll move immediately into unfinished business, discussion and action. Priority for tonight's meeting, FY '23 budget discussion and adoption.
So in the document that's in your package, you have all of the corrections that have been made over time. And then the last reading on pages seven and eight. We do have a couple of other items that are pending as we get down through that list. But this is again what you've seen today.
Okay.
You have a new line item for the equipment fund requested. That is on page seven. Found it yet?
Yeah.
We added for gas, fuel and oil, fifteen thousand for tank replacement. That is on page six.
How much did you include for tank replacement?
Fifteen, that's what you requested.
Yep.
To behoove efficiency for this evening, why don't we also align what's currently listed for everyone, including the public in the agenda, starting with storm cost line of credit interest? Were you able to acquire that?
Yes. It is two, it's for the whole year, of course, it's $2,250 to August 1st is what I asked her. And I hope I have that. Should be one of the documents. I guess it's actually to $2,069. At the point of August 26th, when it actually came to fruition. We have until that date to decide to extend it. We can carry it on.
Do we have the written providence in the record for that or not?
She was going to be here this evening and she didn't have a chance to write it. So I don't see her on Fact TV right now. But I do have an email that states what she had.
She named Katie.
Katie, I'm sorry. Katie Dearborn. Yes.
How long a period of time?
Excuse me?
How long was the period of time?
Twelve months.
Twelve months.
Yep, yep.
So the $2,250 is till August 1st or that's?
It's till August 26th is the date. Twenty-two, that's the full year. And then we can extend it if we need to. But the payment would be in this fiscal year that we're looking at to budget for.
Two thousand two hundred and fifteen or two thousand sixty-nine? Two thousand, that's what I was trying to clarify. That's the full year.
The full year is $2,225.
Two thousand two hundred and twenty-five.
That is the amount, 1% of what we've taken out, which was.
And has that number been placed into the sample budget that we have here this evening?
It has not.
Where were you going to put it? That's what I was trying to find out. Would that be? There is no line item for, that is, can you exit year market for the highway crew? Because that is where it is or is it just?
Darlene, do you have an idea?
I wouldn't put it there. I would put it in a, you know, either your, you know, executive or put it in the FEMA fund as an expense.
I'm just asking as a question. My only thing is when we separate the highway, if it's only, if the grant money coming back in this highway, then this is just to offset some of that grant money. See what I'm saying? If it's only for a storm, which is only for the highway department, but they would also get the money coming in.
We put the FEMA storm in its own fund, so the revenue would come in there.
Can we put the line item for the interest in that FEMA fund?
It won't be a budgeted item because that's not, you're not budgeting that fund. So I might put it in.
No, just as long as it's provided, so we have it at some point.
But it's part, it's really part of the expenditure of doing all that FEMA repair. That's all. As long as we all understand at the beginning, it's going to be a line item in some way for one year. Right. And it's going to be offset for just specifically from that storm. So. We just want to make sure that voters know that we only borrowed it for that storm and no other use.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So what would be called the line item? Interest on storm damage loans?
Yeah, I guess depending on what they, where they want to put it. It is, it is. But you're going to have expenses supposed to that too, right? That's why I was trying to put it.
Make a payment and pay on it.
That's exactly what it is.
So it will be this. But right now, if it goes in general fund, where does it go?
This is for one.
When that money comes in, it's going to be earmarked for a certain department.
It will go in the FEMA fund as revenue in to offset that negative fund balance.
But this is expense, not revenue.
Right, but I mean, when that money comes back to you from hopefully FEMA, that's where you would book the revenue is into that to offset that expense. So you, I would expense it in that fund, but potentially you'll need the, you know, depending if it's going to be long-term or short-term. Will depending, be dependent on if you need to budget or not, in my opinion. If it's short-term borrowing, then you're just taking it as an unbudgeted expense this year.
Yeah, it was just.
If you're going to budget as if it's long-term, then yeah, that's a different discussion. If you're budgeting it as if it was a long-term note, then I would say that you need to put it into your general fund budget because ultimately your FEMA stuff is general fund, even though for accounting purposes, we separated it so you can see. Ultimately, they're all part of the general fund in the accounting world of audit.
So help me out, I'm struggling a little bit still.
So I would, I would put it in, I mean, I just.
You got a specific line item that you put in?
I would create a line item that just said line of credit storm 2021.
There you go.
So it's really clear.
Yep.
And just say interest expense.
Thank you.
No problem at all. Just want to make sure somebody doesn't come back and say, why did you put it here?
Just a thought, it, no, I've got to get that clarified. But just a thought is our first payment will be, again, verified roughly in the June, July range. When we take that first money and pay off the interest of that, that way there doesn't affect this budget.
I guess there's a couple of things. One is we're writing the budget up, that's number one. Number two is when we go to the voters to explain why we were here in March, we had the storm and we're this amount of money short. The interest is all part of, part of the expense that we're explaining and how we pay it back. So I don't think I really.
So it's better to have a line?
I think so.
I think it is because it explicitly states we had a storm. We borrowed money to make sure that we met our obligations under the storm. We incurred a debt and there is no question unless the debt is extinguished by that date, this is at least the amount of money we're going to have to expend. Whether or not it becomes a long-term debt is still not determined.
Right. Darlene, where would it go?
I would either put in executive or honestly treasurer. I mean, I think it's, I don't think it's department, in my mind, it's not department-specific, even though it was related to the highway and you don't separate highway currently. So I just think you could put it in with.
So under, do you have one in front of you?
I have.
So under the category on page two, on the very bottom where it says.
Yeah, like where you have your other bank service charges and all that kind of stuff. That's kind of where I would put it.
Okay, and what would you want to call it?
I would say line of credit 2021 interest expense. Or line of credit storm, if you want to say that, 2021 expense. Line of credit, or I would say LOC, so you can fit it in. Line of credit storm 2021 interest.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, it's.
After, after we separate, that would then become under highway.
So in my mind, this is a special fund where you tracked it, so I wouldn't intermingle it with your operating highway. So that's where I would distinguish it. I would keep it in that fund by itself for tracking purposes. In the big scheme of everything, that FEMA fund we have right now is part of your general fund. So, so if you were, and when the auditors come and look at it, they're going to take those funds together and report them as O1 activity.
But in this, in this budget here that we're working on, going to the board, if we, minute we show that line item, which I'm not opposing, will somebody come back and say, well, where is the expense of the storm itself in this lineup? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And if we were going to say, well, it's kind of buried into where? The highway crew?
So it's, it's a totally separate reporting because what you're presenting them is your operating budget, not your special budget. You know, that's in my mind, a special project, special happen. It wasn't a project you planned, but it was special. So you're not going to intermingle that until you decide if you need to do anything further with that storm for your current budget. If you decide tonight that none of those things have to be factored into your budget, then it's not part of your operating budget next year.
So we should have some sort of accounting for the taxpayers of the money we've spent on.
You took the words right out of my mouth. Some explanation.
This will be like a separate thing.
Because there's nothing, there's nothing here.
That's right.
There's nothing showing that we just spent 700 and some odd thousand.
So we should have an accounting that people can see and.
It's almost like, going to be almost like an article discussion, you know, that hey, because what if the voters came back and said, hey, well, you know, we got extra surplus. Why don't we just pay more of it off? No, just to be honest, knowing that we're going to get some, hopefully by then we'll be able to explain a little more where we think we are with FEMA. But could the voters come back and say, hey, listen, you might not get anything and you're going to start hitting us up quite a bit a year. Why don't we get a head start and take a little bit this year? They would have a right to do that. And at that point, if they, let's say they get up and say, well, want to move 150,000 to this, to this fund to pay for that storm, we would then earmark it as taking property tax to do it, but it's actually not in this budget, it's to pay off the storm. But am I right?
You could take fund balance, yeah, and move it specifically for that purpose, yeah.
Which, right now, when they're going through it, it's not there.
Correct.
Okay.
So if I was, if I was running this as a business, as Nate Stoddard pointed out last week, I've got all this Act 64 work that's been done. I don't really need as much stone. I could take the money out of my Act 64 stones to pay the interest on this loan. But I don't know how you would do that if everything's.
We only make it more confusing.
That's what I'm saying. So it doesn't work that way.
It's so much easier when it's actually all the expenses broken down, each line item, and we can sit there and explain, here's 2,000, but here's the expense over here. We're all sitting there looking at each other. There's another, almost another budget number for the storm that we don't have in our hands right now. Other than we're going to see $2,000, $2,600 worth of interest, somebody's going to ask, well, where is that going?
I've got a copy of Rockinham's expenditure sheet and it shows, like when they do a special project, it shows how much money they got in for the grant and how much money they actually spent. And as that project goes month to month, it shows that.
We should have a document for a town meeting that evidences to that date what we spent, why we spent it, where it was spent, including the loan and the interest expense. So everyone who attends the meeting at least understands, has the numbers in front of them. And then we can very clearly explain where we currently stand. And if we have an update on reimbursement, we can provide it.
And hopefully, we don't have, we'll have a better feel for it, Russ, right? That by then we could say, even though we don't have 380,000, we feel like we are going to get it. Or by then we might say, this, this is not going down the road.
Well, yes.
By then you'll have multiple projects submitted and.
Exactly.
Right.
At least those preliminary.
Prelimaries, correct. Okay. Any other discussion? Yes?
I, if it's too far outside the boundaries, I was thinking we could keep this where it is. And like you're saying, the document, can we just have like an addendum to this that can get handed out? Instead of trying to do it in here, like you're saying, just have a separate.
That's what we're going to do.
That's where, yeah. So an addendum to this that will be in the budget.
The only thing, people who look for the budget, they know, they're going to have a separate document. Okay.
So everyone present, right, knows exactly where the money went. Okay, very good. Comments from the public?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
You identify, please.
Nate Stoddard. So I apologize, either I missed it, I didn't pay attention, something. So my question is of the $175,000 for, so this, this is how your meetings read. "Mr. Allen suggested adding a line to the budget as a capital expenditure for equipment purposes. The town has six trucks requiring replacement every six, seven years. Loader back life spater prices were increased in that mowing, blah, blah, blah. The board agreed by voice confirmation to add 175,000 for an equipment to the highway budget." So is that 175,000 on top of the 145,000 for your transport to capital fund line item? So you're, you're looking for 310,000 for equipment funds this year?
No, you're, you're not correct. We removed 45 as an article, that was an article. Now we just put 175 as a general line on page seven. So we won't have that article that we go to and ask every time for it. Instead, it'll be just in the bottom line.
Okay. That's where, yeah, so like I said, I misunderstood, I missed, either missed it or misunderstood it. So we won't have an article to vote, to approve, to raise and appropriate 145,000 to the capital fund. Okay, wonderful, thank you. I'm sorry again, I misunderstood that.
I don't know, I'm glad you brought it up so it's real clear to everybody that's listening.
Always appreciate your input.
Yeah.
Year-end cost predictions?
Can I ask a quick question?
Please.
Under cemeteries?
Oh, page seven. On the middle, page seven.
So we've talked before about the failed retaining wall at the cemetery up here. Is that something we want to look at? Starting to put a little money towards that when that really becomes a problem, that we actually like are a little bit ahead of the game on that? Technically, it's not a cemetery, especially the road. Okay. I don't know, I'm just asking. No, no, that's what I'm saying. No matter what we'll repair, it's got nothing to do with cemeteries. The roads gave in, that's basically on it. So it would have to be, we down the road, we should discuss it if anything, and the line item that just is going to be down the road. But we. I think the previous board discussed it at least once. We did. At least once, so.
There are meetings up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it was falling apart and you kind of.
It's only a matter of time and it's going to be a fairly expensive thing to do, so. But I think, I think when we discuss it, there is, I did contact somebody in Woodstock that they do that professionally. And they were willing to do X amount per year, like 15,000 this year, 15,000 next year and replace it. And they've done it for several towns I ran into, had good recommendation. I don't know where to that point where they're willing to come down and look at it. But that's all they do is go around and fix some walls, retainer walls for towns on it. So they've looked at it, they know it. But that's what I said, there's a lot of money, but we chose, well, the best way to do is just take a section and just do section at a time. And it's not that bad, we're willing to do it that way. And so I think it's, we're just maybe a little early, but I think we should put it on for the summer to have them come and look at it and.
Is it early, Doc, do you think?
What's that?
Is it early or is it?
Well, you got some sections over pretty bad. So if you're going to do it that way, you could do a section and then wait for the rest of it to. Let them just repair what's bad.
That's what they, they came and looked at it, called me back because they, they had just done a beautiful wall over there.
Yeah.
And they said it's, it's worse than what you think when you get started, you know, because things behind it. But they're professional, they would, they come with equipment. And they said that's what we do a lot of towns is they're on retainer. And they just do 15, 20, 25,000 a year for so many years to just go around.
They're repairing the stones.
They actually, in that case, dig right down and replace it back.
The stones. So we're not talking caro concrete.
No, 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 that's what I was under the impression of.
Well, that's what we originally said.
No, anybody could do that.
The highway department could do.
Yeah, anybody said, these people actually dig down and do a base and use most of the stones to put it back, but they put a drainage behind it and they stand behind their product. So I just want to note that regardless of whatever we do, it's going to cost some money. So do we want to look at putting something somewhere to start that or not? I think, I think we're a year away because I think we're going to make a decision whether we actually go out and get grant money or something. If we're going to, if we're going to start spending 300, 400,000, which is what they originally thought, then that's a different project to do a year. I think we've got to, I think we've got to make that decision this summer that this is the way we're going to do it. Are we going to retain the stone wall or are we going to put a cement wall up? I think we've got to make that decision. And then look at it a couple of different ways. Either go get it and do it all at once or.
I, I don't think it was that much great. The product was.
I thought it was 120,000 first up there.
Right, and the product is like 63 and the installation was 63.
I think one time they said the whole thing, you did the whole thing.
120.
Yeah.
Ish. But then, then we had also talked that we were just going to buy the blocks. And when he had time, he'd lay a section and just keep.
That's why I said, I think we're to the point where we're going to make a decision where we go.
Yeah.
I mean, I like the idea, Jason, of putting some money, you know, in a fund somewhere. This might not be the year to do it.
Well, I don't mind, once we make a decision what we're going to do. I'd hate to put, what Chuck and I talked about too, is put the cement wall and then have a whole bunch of people come in and go, that's terrible what you did. You know, you're right, they won't. They really want to retain the stone wall.
Yeah.
But we've got to be realistic, how much more is it going to cost?
Is there any money in, in the fund for that, like even the cemetery?
No.
There is.
I mean, even if we approach on, say 300,000, we do a cost share if you went after a grant, it's still going to be up.
But it's not really, we just got a cemetery because I think by coincidence, cemetery is the wall back there. But it'd be out of Chuck's maintenance fee for any road at all. Be part of, see if we can get some more money for Act 64 to do the drainage out of there or something. I'm not being sarcastic, but I'm being realistic.
If it was right next to a brook, that wouldn't be a problem, but no.
How was, excuse me, how was your ability to handle technology here? I hate to inconvenience the people who were with us this evening, but I think it's important that we move to executive session. Why we are on the budget discussion. That way, that discussion can, can be had. And then that part of it, as we discussed today with the attorney, can be made in public. I don't think we'll be that long in executive session.
Okay. Or you want to do it right this second?
I do because it's, it's a matter of the budget and the people have a right to understand what's going on.
We should move downstairs to a room. That way this could stay.
That's, that's fine, everyone can stay put and then we'll return.
What's it for?
This is for contractual discussion regarding the highway department. So Chuck Lawrence and the town manager will be included. Yeah, please.
I made one.
Do I have a second? So we're going to adjourn and come back. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
We shall withdraw.
Yes.
Explain this stuff.
Yes.
Are we still recording?
Fact TV is still recording, yeah.
Is anybody still on?
Yeah.
Okay. I can't see.
Yeah.
Hopefully we'll have a nice space. These benches are so hard.
So it's a draft. I wrote it on here this morning, so it's. I have finals this week for my capstone remaster in your business. I just spent a brutal week.
Yeah, I got one coming home, she just finished her final.
Yeah.
This afternoon, there was one supporting to finish them. She finished her accounting, she's like, yay, why do you like that? I'm like, it's awesome. She's like, I hated counting. Yeah, the news, you can hear them.
You can hear everything here.
Yeah. It snowed quite a bit from the last storm when we were here last week. I was surprised going home, I was like, ooh.
Weather patterns are crazy. Like tomorrow's going to be like 55.
Oh, really? Nice tomorrow and then snow Saturday.
And snow, nine degrees.
Nine?
Two or nine, something, it's going to be low at night, teens. Depends on which weather station you watch.
I don't watch any, so.
Look out the window, morning sun.
I cut cable out of my life here about two months ago. It is awesome. Yeah, I do Netflix. I'm a big football fan, so I was able to figure out how to get the Patriots or football on. I'm a big football fan, so I was able to figure out how to get the Patriots or football on Peacock and CBS. But I don't miss watching the news, I don't know what's going on in the world, it's fine.
It's not a bad idea, actually.
Yeah. And it was crazy, Comcast looked almost two hundred and sixty dollars between phone, internet and cable. Cuz it's not worth it to unbundle cuz it costs you more and I was like, you know what, I don't need you at all. Except for, and then we.
So you have to have internet.
Yeah, I live up on Kissel Hill, so we got, um, fiber, they can, uh, Consolidated came up with fiber.
So you got, so you have fiber and so you have a voice over internet, do you have a landline too?
No.
So you don't have a landline, so that cuts out that.
Yeah.
So you just have a fiber internet, no cable, no phone.
Correct, yeah, so, cuz I need five, and I need, you know, internet for work, just working from home, so, yeah, it's nice.
I just have Consolidated do my, uh, fiber and it's, um, and have great service, but it's better than it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Yeah.
It's a lot of money.
It is, but you know what? I, I was down a couple times today and you come to a complete dead stop when there's no internet, like. For, for working for Christmas, you can't do anything without it.
Yeah, you have to have it if you're working from home.
Yeah, it's like, wow, you know, it just goes to show you how. Compromised we would be if somebody hacked in, you know, like did a major thing with, you're kind of dead in the water.
Some of the people that are in, you know, they talk about it all the time, so many people that are in dead spots, you know, that just don't have any.
Vermont, it's bad, yeah.
Yeah, it's awful.
Cell service is kinda sketchy depending on the carrier you have.
Mm-hmm. I can't even get cell service like at the bottom of my cell.
I got full bars.
I'm like.
There's no cell.
Basically where like, uh, the big red barn is, right there, no, I have no service.
Must have USA.
I have T-Mobile Sprint.
So if you wanted to explore something right now, they just put one at Saxons River Horizon.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, everybody's making the switch, I have, I have five G everywhere I go.
Yeah.
I went all the way to Cambridge, I'm like. I can't hide out up here no more. So it's.
Wow.
They're, they're getting it, they just put one out there, fuel the. Fuel, uh, swimming pool area up on the hill, the ski tow. You have Davidson Hill?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Current hat or the.
Oh, uh, VA, up that way, okay, the ski tow up there, oh, okay, yeah. You know, that's another thing, I'd be lost without my cellphone. I can't even believe it's, um, like, the middle of December.
I know, it's crazy.
Wild, where does time go?
Yeah.
That would be interesting if the state or feds require everyone to have some kind of class to get a CDL.
So they do it, we do a lot, but you know in the military, you have to go for twelve weeks to just even, and you get your CDL.
Yeah.
And so they started looking at a lot of acts, saying, well. Cuz they, when they get out, it's transferable, get the CDL, so a lot of the greats been happening. If there's this perfect professional federal school, this is mainly by the federal government, this all started.
Yeah.
So they said, everybody should go to school, cuz they study and they drive and they pass it, but all the tribes are good trained, they're getting this on the job.
Yeah.
So they just need to get the, get the certification, so if they do get an accent, they have that.
Yeah.
It's become a risk liability for these transportation companies.
That makes sense with all these accident, unusual accidents and stuff.
Yeah, they're short, forecasting eighty thousand right now, drivers.
And that's everything we do.
Yeah.
Somebody said, um, the. Lights in the parade are in part were funded by some kind of community development Saturday night. Anybody heard that? Who paid for all that?
Yeah, it came out, it came out of the, I think, a couple of different, um, funding platform, I think Bell Salts has a lot more to do with it, cuz they went through there, but, um.
Well, I know, it was to promote the downtown, but.
Promote the downtown.
I, I know, we had to get together, but we, we had kind of heard, you know, there were a lot of lights and, you know, they covered a lot of trucks and tractors and.
I think people volunteered that part of it, but some of the promotion, I think, was the develop, downtown development committee.
Thanks, house.
For the.
Bell Falls.
For Bell Falls. They're doing a lot, they're doing a lot of good stuff for Bell Falls, just started reboot and all that, even down at the train station.
So I think I need to join that because I was like, oh, ladies' night would have been like a great night to have like a few, few food trucks downtown.
Yeah.
Having Christmas music playing, there were so many people out and about walking around, holidays was packed.
People love that, parade, I mean.
Yeah, they just, you know, put out like a little shack and sold cookies and hot chocolate and played Christmas.
It would have been a big deal.
Oh, yeah.
They could, they could, they could form off the street, right, where we make the turn of the post office, and then at the other, they could shut that down and have, have the fire department flood it and make a skate rink. We'll do our own New York, your own New York skating event.
I'm like, give up a couple, you know, let a school group or somebody do hot chocolate, do popcorn, do cookies.
There's so, there's so much involved with community development, economic development, there's so much and it's. It's a great, it's, it's just a great, uh, great opportunity for communities that can.
That would, I would like smoking bowls, if they like set up downtown Friday day when it was ladies' night, that would have been perfect.
I read the paper, I, you know, the weekly paper, I did not see, what was Pat that told me that was on Facebook, I don't know how people.
Yeah.
Knew about it, he said it was all over Facebook, but if you didn't.
Right, if you don't read that, yeah, the holidays had a nice heater, so if you had just put out.
It can really.
And the heater, people would have sat and, it would have been so good.
Yeah.
That's free.
We're back.
Facebook's a powerful platform to take their pictures.
It is, we hear that on Facebook, and there's a lot of people. It was great.
Right now.
Oh, I'm moving, uh, command of executive session.
A second. Motion to command of executive session with main and second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're out of the executive session, I'm back. Thank you for your patience. Everybody online with us? Okay. Please.
Well, I don't know if you need a motion, I'm gonna just discuss.
Let's discuss it.
Online item on page five, under town wages, I'd like to see us change that into three, three hundred and ninety-three thousand. We can explain. Why we're going. That makes sense. Sorry, say that one more time? We got three, three sixty-three, we raise it by thirty thousand, that'd be three ninety-three.
Okay.
We would change that from three sixty-three to three ninety-three, so that basically we're going from three forty-five to three ninety-three. That includes the cost of living increase in, uh, what we think will be wages increases, salary or wages for the high worker.
Any discussion on this matter?
Definition or not?
Uh. I, I think Craig gave a brief one, we wanted to do a little, well, color to it.
Yeah, just, I think after discussing where we're going, where the economy is going and the lack of, uh, drivers and lack of help. Uh, this is always a moving target too, because we have a bunch of storms and all of a sudden we are over budget sometimes, just because of that, that is a moving target. And we just feel that we got a good crew, we wanna retain them, and, uh, finding drivers with CDL is getting harder and harder, and we need to kind of readjust, we got the best crew we've had in years. But, uh, everything's costing more, there's more competition, we just don't wanna lose the crew we had, so that's where we're putting it, we're adjusting it on it.
Arguments were provided to the record also, um, those are specifically what?
We have a, uh, comparison analysis between wages throughout, uh, area towns and states. So that, um, we can get an accurate depiction on what we're paying our help versus for the same jobs that other. Uh, entities are paying their help.
Okay.
The other thing too is we're, since I've been on the board, we're asking these, uh, how to do more, they used to be just winter plow people and just. Kind of mow and did a few things, now we're asking these guys to run excavators, run backhoes, put in culverts. We are asking to do more and more, and every year we do less and less with private contractors, they're big expenses. We have more equipment now, so we need more trained people that know how to operate the equipment. Same with the plow trucks, a little bit harder, more complicated, they're easier to drive, but you need, they're more expensive, we need people to take care of them, know how to handle them, so. I think we're heading in the right direction, we've got a good crew, done a good job during the storm. And, uh, that's just where we're going, we're just seeing more demand on those qualified people to do the job. And, uh, it's a, it's a long-term investment, once we train them and have these young people training come up. Boy, we don't wanna lose them because all of a sudden the other people wanna take them cuz they are trained, so that's what we're trying to address.
Okay, any other comments or input on this line item? Okay. Thank you everyone for your patience and all your input and, um, information provided. Uh, that will still leave us at our, uh, what about our single audit cost update?
We're still doing year-end cost predictions. Are we not? Charlie?
Oh, I don't, no, it's a. Not for me, uh, so I gave you a simple cash flow tonight.
Thank you.
To, um, look over, I just, we'll explain it just quickly, how I came up with the numbers, the pages in the back are my. Just coming from your financial, um, accounting software, what you're, what you're seeing today, as of today, what we know as of today. So, as of today, you have a million one hundred eighty-nine thousand forty-two dollars and fifteen cents in cash on hand. According to your tax status report, if you're going to collect every bit of taxes that are due to you at the end of. The fiscal year, you have outstanding three million two hundred fifty thousand, so here ninety-five thousand dollars in taxes to be collected. So we can assume you'll collect all of that potentially. So that is this tax status report, I highlighted it, I'm not sure if you got the colors in highlights, so, okay.
I do.
So that's where I got that number from, you have two more payments of state high, uh, aid, state aid to highway to come in at forty-one thousand five forty-five sixty each. Um, that's in your detailed transaction that I gave you. And then the only other. Kind of larger, uh, line item that I saw, potentially you have about another five thousand dollars in rent coming from the post office. So just knowing what I know, as of today, you have about, uh, four million five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars of potential cash coming into the town. What I know you have to pay out as of today is your second installment to the school, so here's the worksheet from the school, and Russ confirmed that as well in his email. We've already paid them two million, you still owe them two million one hundred thirty-five thousand. And you potentially have to pay back that line of credit that you borrowed. Um, estimating if you spent your budget exactly how you budgeted it. With everything being spent, you would potentially, this is what remains in your budget to spend, to what you have budgeted. Then Russ provided me some estimates, that was off by a hundred dollars, sorry, um. On projects that he sees coming up as potential needing of cash. So Henwood is actually forty-two five, um, digital records you voted on last meeting, the bridge in Saxton's River, the second installment to the fire district. So if everything happens perfect in a perfect world, you could potentially see a million eight dollars in cash available to the town as due in third.
Thank you very much for doing it this way.
Yeah, so just simple, so, that is your, that's not how your budget's gonna lay, it's how your cash is potentially. Of course, the reality of you collecting everything for taxes is probably not going to happen, and the potential of you spending every single penny of your budget. Also probably is not gonna be reality, so.
So if we, if Russ collects some delinquent taxes, those are not included.
Yeah, these are all your taxes, so this, I ran the tax status report, yeah.
From, yeah, okay.
Included, this is your tax status report of all of your taxes that remain on the books.
Next group, we will get delinquents taxes from the last period, but we might get some more into this period, so your, your level of planning, what you're doing?
So this number is all this. So this number is all the taxes that are due to the town as of today.
Whether they were like the last year or.
Everything that is due to the.
Not today, but February tenth.
Well, you've already billed those, so yes, they're not technically due, but they're billed.
Right.
So, yeah.
And you encumbered all that eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, what you did, you went down and encumbered all the what?
I did not do that in the system. All I did was I took your budget status report and took the last page of it and said, your total expenditures that you budgeted were two million three hundred fifty-seven thousand eight ninety-five. You've spent a million five oh two. The difference between that is eight fifty-five.
Yeah, okay.
So this would be if everything is in a perfect world and done exactly, all collected, all spent, you would have a million and eight dollars at the end of.
And that, when you went and did it, you included all the special articles.
Those have already been, so I'm talking cash. So we're just talking cash, so those, those are already been um, in your expenses. Yeah, so if not, they would be covered by this eight fifty-five.
Eight fifty-five.
Right, so we're just talking cash now.
Yeah, no, it's possible, no.
So under this scenario, we'll have paid back half the line of credit.
Correct. What has been borrowed, which is all you owe right now.
Right. Which case our interest payment would be smaller than we putting into the budget.
I'm not sure.
Depending on where, when we, if we paid it back tomorrow, then.
Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, and it's a, a really good basic um, document that if we can, in the spirit of the financial manual that we're crafting for future, having that either done monthly as we go through the year. So as we go through the year, um, there could be a little bit more specifics to see how we're targeting. Three months out, six months out.
Right.
No, I know, but this is a good way of doing it and it's certainly very helpful to uh.
I thought it was simpler.
Yes, simple is good.
You know, of course, it doesn't take into account other little bits of revenue you get, town park fees.
But this document as a basic could be modified even quarterly to show us how we're, how we're stacking up um, at that time, going through the fiscal year for the board.
For cash.
Yes, terrific. Really well done. That's uh, that's I think what we were looking for, right?
No, it's, it's.
If I can understand it, it's gotta be pretty easy.
Yeah. Well, it would be nice if it's in the flash, if we could go back and look at each year where we were at just.
Yeah.
And that really even helps more to look at, okay.
But we can start doing that, using this as a bench, as a, as a basic start, starting point.
So just to clear, this isn't about your budget tax, so this is just your cash position.
Yes.
Yeah, just make sure we're talking the same.
The minute we talk cash, we talk now the school. When we're doing budget, we have nothing to do with the school. But it always raises my question every time is, well, wait a minute, we have to pay the school first, no matter what. Then we, we have to pay the high, the fire department, they get their money no matter what, so what's left for us is what I'm always asking, so. Thank you.
And it's good um, with immediacy, let's say monthly or even quarterly, that the board knows in future, no matter who's on here, uh, where we are from a disciplinary standpoint on our cash position, yeah. Whether or not a storm comes or not, or some other anomaly, that's different, but this is really good. This is what future boards will need to stay disciplined. So thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, please.
Nate's daughter. Um, I don't know if this is the time, I, I'm only asking because I just heard it again. And apparently I didn't pay very good attention last week, but my question's about the Henwood Hill project. I thought we voted, or it was discussed, or we put money in years past of like twenty-seven thousand to work on Henwood Hill for the next three years or something. Is the forty-two thousand that Darlene just mentioned part of that same project?
Oh, we abandoned that project. You, you had, we had earmarked thirty-seven thousand a year for so many years. After we did the first year, we never put it in again because we completed where we're at. Instead of contracting out, we did it in house.
So the forty-two thousand is to then pick back up and finish doing the repairs to Henwood Hill?
That's the one that we had from the flood, where we're putting the covert in this, this Bucky Adams bid it. Next to do the covert right up behind Allen Brothers, has nothing to do with the widening of the road further down. Okay? That make sense?
There's no, there's no call.
Or whatever it involved.
So it's.
Storm related, sorry, go ahead. It is storm related, alright?
This forty-two is?
Yeah.
Forty-two five, yes, storm related.
It was a bid to, to Bucky Adams or Adams to do it.
Yeah, I don't care about the. So the forty-two five is going to be added to the seven hundred and some odd thousand for storm damage repair.
That's correct. Yes.
Good question on.
Yeah, we're, or so, I'm sorry, or so we're, we're putting forty-two in the budget. No, that's, she's just explaining what your money situation is. Okay, never mind.
Yeah.
But that forty-two is going to be part of potential reimbursement from FEMA.
That's correct.
Good question though.
It's only fixing storm damage.
That was actually exactly all it was. We did all, prepared up to this storm damage and we went to bid to do the stored damage and that, that's why the exact dollar is there, because that's what the bid was rewarded for.
Thank you.
You, John?
Yeah, so that was my question. That's what I asked a few meetings ago about the, the money, I think we went back with, was because we voted an article for Henwood Hill that wrote a hundred seventy-five grand. And so I didn't know why we're only doing forty thousand, so what you're saying is that project has been abandoned.
It's been abandoned.
Okay, yeah, that clears that up.
It was a total confusion of whether we were borrowing the money at all or nothing, and we just finally have to decide to do it a different way.
So we're on a storm dammit and new projects.
Yeah.
Perfect, that, that clears that up.
Terrific. Thank you. Uh, okay. Revenue sheet.
No, single order.
I'm sorry, single audit cost, my apologies.
Update, uh, that is not going to be FEMA reimbursable, um, nor is the interest for the line of credit. The new rules and regulations for FEMA's reimbursement, so um, again, interest and audits are not part of the reimbursable dollars.
But we already have the audit in there. We have that expense, we're just going to add that.
We just, we're hoping to get that back.
We're going to just add the twenty-six hundred like we discussed to another.
That's great, we're covered, yep.
Okay.
It's just a matter of that we have to point to get it back.
Good, John?
We're not, our regular audits we're paying for, but we, we never earmarked money for this special one. We just, when we hit that seven figure threshold, we, we were talking about that, so that'd be like ten grand or whatever, or eighty-five hundred. We haven't, maybe I'm wrong, we haven't earmarked any of that money, so we're.
We did last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, this would be a normal year, there's, there's years we do a major audit and not.
Right, so we're not going to recover, we're going to eat that as a.
That's why we put it in here.
That's why it's in the budget.
Just so, yeah, just to clear.
I just want to make sure that we understood it was all.
Yeah, I, I thought we were wanting to opt you on us together as well, so I just want to make sure they're broken out separate, not getting all separate from the special.
No, a normal year, we would have gone back to the ten, there's always ten and seventeen, ten and seventeen. And the normal year, we would have been back to the ten or eleven, instead we got twenty.
The top line on page three.
That's, it's there, it's there, that's why.
It's a regular and single audit.
Yeah. It happened to be a year where we would have had, we would have had a lot, lot less expense for the audit.
And we're still getting your fees reimbursed, you mentioned last meeting.
Yes.
At ten percent of whatever the dollar value is.
Five percent of the total amount spent.
So about forty-five to sixty thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Correct.
It's to be about um, forty-eight thousand.
So are we going to earmark any, we, we know we're going to get back, are we going to earmark any of that in the budget, are we going to talk about that?
It's all going to be part of the storm.
Part of the storm.
It's going to be part of the storm reimbursement and that won't, that won't happen until the very end, which is probably a year and a half, two years away.
Bottom line, I think when we go to the voters, that's what we're all, that was going to be a whole discussion totally separate from this budget. But an update of where we're at, how much money we spent, how we think we're going to recover it, how the process is going to work and hopefully we'll have our act together. Looks like we're getting closer, huh?
You are. Revenue sheet?
It's just in your packet to keep you um, updated to, to the point of trying to keep it uh, with the changes. Um, we just made a change tonight, so it will reflect that um, for the final approval.
So I have a question. Onto the garage fund, says transfer from garage fund. Um, and we put in money to the budget for the fuel tanks and we'll, we'll have to take money out of the garage fund for those fuel tanks.
No, it's in fuel.
Well, wherever we put the extra thirty to pay for the add-on to what we have in the garage fund. So we don't have to show a transfer from the garage fund for the coming year for that work?
Not until it's done. Yeah. Darling can chime in.
So after we spend it, then we show it's been transferred from the garage fund?
I.
You added fifteen thousand, you keep saying more than that, it's, it's.
Oh, I'm sorry, fifteen thousand, so we didn't have enough money in the garage fund.
That's correct.
So we had, I'm sorry, fifteen thousand, but that sixty-three that is in the garage fund, I'm just wondering where we show that? So next year, we show that we transferred it?
Correct. It's in a designated fund for town garage repair.
Yes, yeah, I understand that, so I'm just wondering why it says transfer from garage fund and we don't have anything, we don't need it.
Where, where are you looking at that?
I mean, maybe.
Oh, you're over.
Maybe this has not moved, I, I don't know, I'm just curious where we show, where we take money out of the garage fund and we'll be spending it. So see other departments, transfer from garage fund zero, 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 we, because we just keep the money there. But if we do the work in F Y twenty-three.
But we don't have a line item for the expense, so it's offset. So if all of a sudden you said you want to put a roof on it, on the expense on the garage, we would put fifteen thousand, then we were over. As the income, we would see we move to fifteen thousand or whatever it goes to. But because we didn't actually earmark the expense for it right now, we don't need to put it in there.
Uh, okay.
We did do the fifteen under the fuel.
Right, no, I understand that. Okay, that's fine. I just wonder why we have a line item for transferring from garage fund in there.
I mean, technically, we could have made another line item for removing the fuel tanks and put fifteen in it, but.
We definitely should get rid of the rainy day, that one is.
Yeah, get rid of the rainy day, no, that's all, but, okay, so. Alright, so I'm assuming in the future somewhere we'll show that we took money out of the garage fund.
Same with this rate.
Logging in something you could know.
Yeah, those, both those lines can.
Okay.
This time of year though, we always, I always ask you the same kind of question is, now that we're working on this budget and we're talking about property taxes, Russ?
No, no.
Russ?
Yes, I'm sorry.
And this time of year, we, we start to look at property tax, what is going up? Where do you feel we are with the townwide assessment as far as, is like, are we, is the work, town worth going up? I mean, last year we thought it went up, instead it went down?
You're talking for, for a reass, total reassessment of the.
You know, normally it's.
We, we thought we would do this coming fiscal year, just as you're saying. But last year at the, at the last shake, we were almost dead on to where we, where we need to be. So it's postponed it another, probably another year.
Okay.
So, um, I, but again, that is a total fund that has gotten um, some serious money in it um, for the total town reappraisal.
No, I'm more aware is uh, let's say the town was, we've always been saying it's three hundred billion dollars or whatever.
Yep.
In the last year, you have come to us and said, well, I think even though we're at, you know, one point eight million dollars, that, the, the penny on the dollar won't go up because we've, the town's worth more.
Because.
Being worth less.
The grand list goes up.
List went down. Do you think, right, do you think that it will, it will go up?
I do, because we're just getting caught up with all the permits that we, that we granted last year. So yes, the, the uh, assessments are, are coming in right and regular now. Um, for the house, brand new houses and the big additions and et cetera, so yeah.
I mean, that's a huge help.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
It used to be, the people don't ask anymore, but it used to be at every meeting, they would say, how many pennies on the dollar did my tax just go up? So you could relay it to people, but it seemed like nobody asked that anymore.
Yeah, that's, that's a tough one to.
Well, because of the school.
Yeah.
And the highway to school is so hard to determine, yeah.
Could I, um, I think we need to go back to Susan's point, I think she is correct. That, from my opinion, you do need that money coming in from the garage fund because it's revenue. Otherwise, you're raising taxes to pay for that repair. If you're trying to use money from a reserve to offset that expense, it needs to be as a budgeted revenue to offset the expense, so you're not raising taxes to pay for that repair. If you don't show the revenue and you just show the expense in the gasoline, whatever the fuel line that is of fifteen thousand dollars and you don't show anything else in your revenue, you're getting that revenue by raising taxes.
I thought we were a bit short on that tax, so that's why we wanted to do that.
So, so if you're using garage money from the reserves to pay for this fuel tank replacement, right? You want to show that money's coming in as an other revenue, so you're not raising people's taxes to pay for that repair. Because you've already taxed them by putting the money in the reserve.
Yeah.
So you need to show the revenue here, because if you don't, your automatic worksheet is taking your expenditures, less your other revenue is property taxes.
No.
So right now, you take expenditure, you don't have that offsetting revenue to decrease it, that you're.
So it's just the fifteen thousand, like you're saying.
Whatever you're going to transfer from, that you plan to use from the reserves of the garage fund should come over as other revenue.
No, but I think we need to clarify that.
Yeah, so here's what we need to clarify, so we're going to take sixty-three thousand from the garage fund, put it in revenue. We don't have, sixty-three thousand is not enough, so we added fifteen thousand budgeted, put it in Chuck's budget and that will cover the fuel tank.
The rest of it, the rest of it.
So my question is, do we have to put the entire sixty-three on the budget side in addition to the fifteen?
Uh, no, then we'd have to put the, we put sixty-three as expense, but then we'd be showing sixty-three as income coming in. So tax-wise, we're, we're, we're okay.
Right.
What she's saying, because people think it only costs fifteen thousand, while it really costs sixty-three plus fifteen.
Right now, if you budgeted sixty-three for all of this work, you've only budgeted fifteen.
Right.
Then if you transfer fifteen and put it in revenue, it's a net effect to our taxes. If you don't, you're raising taxes to cover that fifteen thousand dollars.
We're raising the taxes to cover the shortage in that line. We're short fifteen thousand in that lineup.
So you should be budgeting the whole cost of the project and bring over the.
So you bring in the sixty-three plus the fifteen.
And your shortage would be your fifteen.
Right. Tax-wise, we're okay, but to show them what this is actually costing, when you're saying that you're going to add sixty-three for more to the expense, to show sixty-three coming in for revenue.
Right.
But there's more than sixty-three, we're fifteen thousand short, so.
Seven, so, yeah, seventy.
But I think you want to be transparent that you're taking the money from the garage fund, so I.
Need to put it in the revenue.
I think so.
So we do, but here's my other question, so in the line item that where we added the fifteen thousand, does that actually, do we have to put sixty-three, another sixty-three thousand to show the transfer from the garage fund?
If, if, but, well, at that point, it's going to make us in the future look stupid in the fuel bill, we should actually make a separate line item.
Okay.
Put fifteen, put the sixty-three, then put sixty-three over here and then it will, it will all wipe out. And it's much more, I thought the same thing, I was going like, down the road, we're going to have, we never spent that much money on fuel wells because we actually did a tank.
So somewhere it should say transferred from garage fund and it should show us.
It's a line item that says, uh, remove fuel tank.
You put transfer in in your revenues from the garage fund.
Right.
Then I would put an expenditure down in your garage that says exactly what it is. Transfer from fuel to replacement.
Yeah.
And then nobody's questioning you and nobody, and you're not fumbling to say, what is that again? Right, you know?
So.
I wouldn't be nervous about adding accounts, to be clear.
I don't have a problem with that, I was questioning that to start with, because we go back every year and go. I don't have a problem with that, I was questioning that to start with, because we go back every year and go, why did we have so much in for the fuel when we didn't spend it?
Okay.
So. So Darlene, are you saying that we should, so you, you got one in front of you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good, so page six, so we added fifteen to the seventy five. To make it ninety. So we should take that back away. Make a line item that states.
Seventy.
Additional money is needed for, for fuel tank removal or something like that.
Just fuel tank removal, so people understand the cost of this project is really seventy eight thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Don't, I don't think it's transparent to show it's only fifteen, it's really seventy eight.
Right.
But you have some money saved for it, so that's a good thing, so you bring that in in the revenue to say, well, we've covered, we know we planned this. We're bringing in sixty three, so really it's just a shortage of fifteen, and I think it's a little more clear to the taxpayers what the true cost of this is to them.
Yeah.
Also add a separate line, yep.
One new line and one transfer.
Transfer.
The transfer line is already there.
Revenue that you already have there.
Get to over here.
Talking on the expenditure line.
Yeah, so the expenditure line is just.
One and revenue has one.
We could take the jackhammer out and change that for a fuel tank.
So confuse things, yeah.
One expenditure that says fuel tank or whatever, it's just the fuel tank, is that what we're doing?
Replacement, yeah.
Okay.
Ninety thousand and then the, the, the revenue will only be sixty three?
Yep. And then that difference is what you're asking taxpayers to fund through taxes.
But you're going to change the sixty three to the transfer from gro, from garage fund. On the revenue side.
That's where you're going to add the sixty three, because you don't want to net your revenues and expenditures.
Okay, so one other point here, so the ninety thousand will be reduced by fifteen thousand, because we're going to take. The extra money out of there and put it into the line that says fuel tank replacement. So the line item that says gas, fuel and oil will go back to seventy five thousand.
Yeah.
And the line above it or wherever will be seventy eight thousand, and then we'll have the transfer in the revenue part.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, have we concluded that? Cleaning expenses?
So the, the deal that Jason started, I called and. It, it, it is a once a month, um, deal of cleaning the fire, um, house, just the main. Uh, meeting space and a bathroom. Uh, and I had our cleaning folks go over and it will be eighty dollars a month added to our budget. To meet there. Understandable, it's just once a month and she will do it when she's doing. Um, this office should just go right straight across and, uh, and clean that for additional eighty dollars. That's mopping, wiping the tables, doorknobs, and then cleaning the, the bathroom.
You got to pay for that anyway to the fire common budget, right? Or no?
No, this is additional, this is, this is COVID thing.
At the end of the day, if we wanted to, we could use, we could probably petition ARPA funds for that, right, that's COVID expenses. I'm just saying for eighty bucks, I don't think, honestly, it's worth the effort, but.
That's a one time.
That's true, that's, that's true.
And if you're planning on doing this for a while, until the institute is up and running.
I didn't give the one time. I think, I think eighty dollars is pretty reasonable.
Yeah. I agree.
And Cole was all right with that, you talked to him and he.
He's the one who said it, yeah, yeah, so we should add a thousand dollars to our cleaning line. If it's all agreeable to everyone.
I was trying to find that line where you have. It's on page one.
The contracted services?
The office supplies.
Would be under contracted services.
Department contracted services.
Yeah.
Page two.
Yeah. Long one in with seventy six. How come we get zero in here now? Is that what we're waiting for?
Because we moved that whole line item, which was Nemrek to a, a main. Line under treasury, so now this one should be to. Thousand, but that's still not the cleaning.
No, I'm just saying, it's not the right line then.
No.
I'm not sure.
I thought it was under your budget, is it, where would be, uh?
Under municipal buildings, isn't it?
Honestly, couldn't tell you.
What's office supply?
Page four, municipal building, you're in total contest for.
That would be it.
Yeah.
Yes, it would. Thank you.
You change that to ninety four?
So that would be ninety four.
Okay. What's next?
Oh, that means we're done with the budget?
That's what I'm inquiring to.
We have enough of this.
Are all our items identified and reviewed?
I think so, we need to have it recaptured. So yes, the question is Russell set for the.
I have to add the seventy eight, that was the only one we don't have. If that's what we're going to do.
But tax wise, we're going to put that at seventy eight, his income is going to be seventy, I mean, sixty three, is that what it is? Yeah, sixty two.
Oh, going through the changes that we made. We need to add. Twenty two fifty for the line of credit. A thousand for the cleaning. Thirty for the. Highway wages. Seventy eight for tank removal.
And change the ninety to seventy five. Gas fuel and oil.
Correct.
You're going to put the sixty three as income, and I think we got it.
My shorthand is correct, it's two million five hundred and fifteen thousand, six, six, five. Somebody got a calculator on their phone?
Yeah.
I can read them to you. Two million four oh four.
Wait, let me clear it out.
Sorry.
Two, give me the numbers, two what?
Two million four oh four, four fifteen.
Yep.
Add thirty thousand. One thousand. Seventy eight thousand. And two thousand two hundred and fifty.
Two million five one five six six five.
Yep.
And, um, so you add the seventy eight, but did you subtract the fifteen?
Of course, no, because. That's, that's right.
Taking that off from the gas, fuel and oil. We move that to the, um.
She's right.
Seventy eight, so you have to subtract fifteen.
Fifteen, so it's two million. Five hundred thousand.
Two five zero zero six six five. Basically, you're taking, yeah. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve the budget for fiscal year twenty three slash twenty four. Two million five hundred thousand, six hundred and sixty five dollars.
Motion has been moved. To adopt the budget.
Yeah, that, okay, second. I'll second that.
And seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post. Budgeted adopted. Select board meeting, fire station.
Kind of just said it, but, um. I, I did. Tell Cole that we are looking at the institute for longevity part of this, but. Um, that we would need it for probably a year, eight months to a year. While that's all being. Fixed and at that point, we can make our own decision whether that is suitable for, um, meetings without echo and, uh. Problems, so, um, that's the agreement right now, eight months to a year, and reassess the. The, uh. Meeting spaces.
So we have an, at least a agreement of understanding that, um, should we move, um, our select board meetings. Uh, to, uh, the fire department, um. During the COVID, higher COVID numbers.
Starting January twelfth, is what I told them.
Okay, starting January twelfth, uh, to address concerns by the public to make, uh, people more comfortable. Um, for spacing, masking, et cetera, and that, uh. Obviously, it's a bigger venue too, and, uh, more folks could, will feel. I guess more safe because of the space. Uh, any other comments, any comments on that from anybody? Public? Work? Okay, great, January twelfth. That's our next meeting.
That's correct.
So it will be held at the fire station?
That's correct.
Okay. That brings us to town meeting, uh, date and time, um.
So you asked me about April, um, to check dates available, um, our town clerk. Assistant town clerk has a huge issue with, um, the beginning of April, so the. By the time we get all said and done, April thirtieth works for the clerks and. It's their meeting, so that kind of important to be there, so that's, uh, where we're at is.
We do April thirtieth. How many, we had to go backwards because we need the budget passed by June thirtieth, so if we have to have another meeting for any reason at all.
We have all of May and.
Yeah, we have plenty of time.
Plenty of time, so April thirtieth, the other. Caveat is in the Brattonberry former, whether it was yesterday or today, it stated that the high school is having a concert slash. John, was it a, was it a?
High school here? High school.
Bellis Falls High School is having a concert and slash.
Winter concert dinner.
And a dinner. And, uh, that they're going to, uh. Have, uh, seating, yeah, it was a big article, it was, it was good size in the Brattonberry former and that, uh. Seating was, was available in person, but it was, um, limited. They were going to space people out, um, so I've got to call into the supervisory union to see if that's. Fact or fiction, and she said she didn't know anything about the concert. Um, so she's waiting for the new superintendent to get back to talk to him about it. So. He was at a meeting all day today, so anyway, I should know very soon, but, um.
Well, maybe it won't be an issue. I don't know, whatever.
Yes.
If we at least pick a day, then we can see.
This is the one that you don't have to have. You have to have it soon because the clerks have to do their, their, um, their ballots, their, their, um, they have to declare it through the state. So you have to do it soon, but we don't have to.
You know, elections, that's still always. Elections for your officers, what, how did we do that last year?
That's not going to change, that's, that was held here.
That's that March.
That, that are still going to happen in March for reelections.
Yes.
Yeah, the question was always, well, nobody's running against Kevin anyway.
It's Kevin and Susan, right?
I probably won't be running, but that's all right.
What do you mean? You're not going to leave already.
We can discuss that later, Craig. All right.
It was also brought to our attention today, um. Want to talk about that? The, uh.
What they meant?
At the legislatures considering, um, moving back the, uh.
Oh, I, I read an article that they were considering allowing towns to move their dates around for. That meeting.
Right, that's why we are doing, yeah, and they're, they're also talking about having, um, uh, everything all Australian. Um, where you'd have an informational meeting via Zoom, um, Rocket Am did it last year, uh, I think Putney did it last year. Or you can have a town meeting in.
We might want to discuss that at the next meeting, did you put that back on?
Yeah.
Because. I'm telling you, it's, it's hard to get people to come out. With this environment and everything, but people want to vote, we see that every time, how many people come out and vote, it just blows me away about how few people come to a building. It's getting worse all the time.
So I, 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 what I need is, um, kind of a, um, a generic vote, whether the.
Is April, that a Saturday?
April thirtieth is a Saturday at ten o'clock, yes.
And I don't.
And that's, the fire station is, is free.
Okay, then you need almost a motion for us to, to do that.
To accept February, and I, I don't have my calendar, February twenty sixth is the, the normal Saturday. Or this one, and it's depending on, um. We can have two, uh, it's depending on, on availability and, and COVID at the time. It's kind of like what we did last time. We had two dates that, uh.
So what's the February one for?
That's town meeting, if we can have it in the high school, then.
We would have it February twenty sixth, that's a Saturday.
February twenty sixth.
Be the last Saturday in February.
That's correct, and, and the actual town meeting day is ma, is, uh, uh, March first. That's the first Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, it would be March first, yeah, you're right, yeah, yeah. So we would declare that as normal, but we would then.
We're kind of, we're kind of at their mercy, if they say, no, no, you've got, you've got a hundred and something people coming. Sorry, that didn't happen in here, if they say that, then we've got an alternate date, I can just plug it in and rock and roll, it's going to be one or the other. So if you guys said that, uh, in this meeting voted that, um, our first option is February twenty sixth, and if it's not. Um, uh, permissible by the, the supervisor union, then we'll move to the April thirtieth at the fire station.
Have you asked the town clerk if they'd be ready for the February twenty sixth?
That's why they need that, that date now, so that's, I'll have the answer by tomorrow. And that's too late for you guys to vote tonight, so if I have this vote that has two dates and you're good with those two dates, one or the other.
And I'll make a motion that we go ahead and schedule for the regular town meeting to be February twenty sixth. I don't think I have to declare a location, we'll just put the date of February twenty sixth and then alternate day of April thirtieth.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Uh, that's fine with me, I.
Yeah.
We know that it's going to be at the high school because that's the only, li, literally the only place that. That has big enough space with, um. Microphones and et cetera.
Motion is made, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye, aye, post. Okay. Uh, but we'll put this on for the next meeting as well, you said.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
I think we need to discuss.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, and I'll know all the answers by then.
Good, okay.
It's shocking to see it in the paper.
Yeah, no, it's a moving target still a little bit right now. Uh, financial processing manual update.
Unfortunately, I haven't worked on it in a week.
Okay.
From working on the other items, so.
From working on the other items, so I will get back at it.
We'll get back to it on January.
After the holidays.
January fifteenth, okay, thank you for all you're doing. Twelve, I'm sorry. Sorry, State of Vermont, ACCG Opportunity, John Jones.
Mr. Chair, so, um, last meeting, we left off with um. Some requests to provide some information in addition. So at two this morning, it's been a busy week, I drafted this up, in front of you folks, there's a book. That I can thank Sarah from BDCC, she, we worked together, she had that sense of talent. That would be the reference in the first paragraph, in the second paragraph, for you guys if you want to look through it, kind of at the speed, so. So this was my draft thought, um, in collaboration with everybody, of how we could start this off. And if you folks vote to establish this tonight, I do have a lot of people interest, I can fill all the seats. And so there's three positions dedicated to the chairs of other committees like the DRV and the planning. Overlapping, so that they can have their committee's work brought over, so that they can spend opportunities and all the stuff. And I. I did forget until I saw downstairs was, I know we've, our schools changing, we have a school committee, so. Our educators might want to have some, you know, maybe somebody, I don't know. Obviously, so. But um, yeah, if you've had a chance to read through, if there's any questions, um, more direct.
You know, I guess once in a while, I've been here long enough to get the air, how I feel. Um, I've been on the board a long time, we are really weak about the direction of this town, where we're going. When I first got on, one reason I got on, almost going to be nineteen, twenty years coming up, um, was the industrial park. And same time. We had this feeling that the whole town was being populated too fast. And as much as I was outvoted many times anyways, so we put a rid line, where we can't build houses on rid line. Then after that, we took two-thirds of the town and changed them from two acres to five acres to slow the growth down. Because we had so many people that this town was growing too fast, it's not a town we want to live with. So I spent probably ten years of us trying to slow the town down. Same time, we were trying to get the industrial park to come down because we have no sewer water, lo and behold, we take industrial park, put a solar ray panel in there now. So we don't have no industrial, it is so hard to to have any business in this town. Our company just did the same thing where they gave up and basically bought another business in Lebanon, Hampshire. To try to get employees, which we did, get a lot of good employees out of Walpo, that don't want to pay income tax in Vermont, they want to stay in New Hampshire and keep working. Uh, so we have a lot of things against us, and it's to a point where. I think we need some direction in this town, if we're never going to be a business, which I don't think we ever will be, you know? Uh, if we're never going to have an industrial parks or a big office building, which I don't think we ever will, nor will do people, will they want it? We're going to be where we are stagnated, uh, yeah, are we going to become places for old folks to build some, some homes where they can. Live in and be on that, we tried that, that got defeated and never went in. Uh, we don't, the only thing that's ever passed was maybe some low income housing here and there scattered around. Uh, so if we're trying to slow growth down, which is where we've been for the last ten, fifteen years. Is this town changed where all of a sudden, I'm hearing for the last five, six years, we don't have enough kids in the school, we don't have enough. I would never, and I think we need to come to a town where we realize, okay, what does this town want? Is, does it want to have a good school system with good town homes, with nice, and what can people afford? Bec- and just go that avenue because since I got on it, was always going to be this, and it ain't going to happen, there's always going to be this happen. But we spent a long time taking a lot of land in our town and making it harder to put homes in when we did that. Uh, in this hard for people to start out, and I don't know where the picture is now, where we're going. But it's great that everybody wants to come in and go get money, but where are we spending the money, I mean? Uh, what direction are we going in, so that's where I'm thinking that somewhere along, tonight's not a night, but we need to bring it back to the select board of. Where the direction is, because select board, ultimately, we were the ones that passed all these rules and regulations, that you couldn't put these homes up. We couldn't build, we made it, we tried like heck to get the select board to stand behind getting sewer and water down through here. We never got anywhere with any, but other than slow the growth down, so.
Um, I I I'd like to kind of chime in here as a state, well, I know, I I think that's not a good way to look at. Community growth, because we have people telling us, this community development will help us understand those shortfalls. But. And help bring it back, so you can have a better picture where the towns were. Where this fits in is our town plans, all the stuff we're working on, our 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 state planning, what they're telling us we should be doing. And down the road, we're going to see all these grant opportunities are going to come through this funnel, and if we don't have a committee to give us a voice.
I guess my comment is, there again, what opportunity are you talking about? What opportunity?
Community development as a whole, you have to look at the whole picture, so what we do in Westminster has aligned with like what Bellis Falls and the other towns are doing. And what the state has set forth from community development, it's a, that book has got a lot of great information. I would, I would like to, I put three years on in there, we we talked about a timeline, I would like a vote to just, let's give this a chance. We don't have to make any dramatic dramatic changes right now, but we can feedback to you, the committee. Let's steer this and see where we are in a year. I I I I would really like to get a vote on it, and I'm, I just. I've put a lot of work into this first, I took it on first project, helped out, and I'm working on a lot of it, everybody else is, so. I understand the feelings, we have a bunch of people in the community that want to be on this committee, they reached out, and we have state hold, it's ready to support us, and I feel. I I value what you're saying, that's where we've been, like you said, the land, we have increased, but. We have to look at building affordable housing for people in our community to populate us, but we also have to have an infrastructure here that supports it. We're going to kind of, the saying is, if you're going to get left in the back of the pack, and everybody else around us, and this is why all these other towns are getting those labor forces. Those house values can go up, so it's, it's a real, it's a bigger picture now when we talk about economic development, community development. And I understand where you're coming from, back in the day, yeah, we didn't have any guidance on anything, and I know we don't have any industrial land, and. But we have a heavy ag infrastructure, and that can help our agricultural infrastructure as well, so I I just, sorry, go ahead.
No, sorry, I I guess I would be in favor, but it has a, you know, sort of a three-year sunset, I'd be happy with that, you have people. That was my other concern, you wouldn't find enough people to serve on the committee, you say they do, and um. I'm just thinking that, you know, we tried a few years ago to get senior housing off the ground before COVID started, so that might be a very good. Way to get that, to get the senior housing uh issue back.
I think it's great, I mean, there's going to be a, trust me, there's going to, there's going to be a lot of information coming, that book's only one of so many, and. You folks are at, you're in the seats as our elected officials, that when it comes back from the committee to say, yeah, we want to move on this, or no, we don't. And get the voice of the whole town as a whole, because that's, that's, you know, I hear from everybody, yeah, that's great, even I hear, you know. So I know people want to develop their land, they want to build a field out of acre two. Because it's economic for them to do that, and, you know, so I, that's a different story, but that's why. I put it there, DRB, those that's the board that handles our zoning, so they can have a seat at the round table and say, this is why this would work or not.
So I think the planning commission is, is the ultimate one that actually writes up the rules. And they were directed by the select board years ago to slow growth down, really, it just made it. When we went to that, it was harder and harder, I mean, we had people come to us pretty upset that they were, you know, they had nine acres. They were going to give two acres each one of their kids and haven't lived there, and they come back, they couldn't subdivide because you can't give away, at least you gotta. You you gotta have ten acres in order to give five acres away, you see what I'm saying? And we just came back and go, oh, wait a minute, all these people that had eight or nine acres are stuck with one house there for forever, because of the way we made the rules. And I think that that, it was a while ago when we did that, we need to come back to and address it and go. Did we actually slow it down, and now they're coming and saying we don't have enough families and homes to area to build.
That is what this committee can help you folks decide, because I, my personal thing, like I, my oldest is left for college, and now that they've kind of gone out of the nest. I'm like, and then she wants to be a teacher, I'm like, do you want to come back here and teach, she goes, dad, what am I going to, you know, I'm like. She's well, like, I'm just, so I use my personal experience to say where our generations are, it's a generational thing we're looking at, we have to. We all know what we had, we know where we are, and then we have our younger generations, and these are the feedback loops that they want to see kind of more in our community for us to do, and it. And would help for three years as well, we don't have to run out and subdivide a hundred acres into one acre lots and start building. But I'm sure there's some people in the community that would have some great input to say, yeah, we could put. Retirement housing, elderly housing, and we can build little single one-story ranches and take that revenue of the town, but make it something that's. I appealing to the community, they're doing this all over, um, instead of having these big structures, that's one, but, so you'll have a lot.
Jason. Your thoughts?
Uh, I think, I think I would echo Sue's thoughts, you sound like you have people that. Want to fill the seats and, I mean, I can, I can get behind that.
Yeah, it, like I said, don't, excuse me wrong, I'm just telling, as a select board. I don't want to discourage you because I want you to go do it, I want to discourage, and the fact that you're going to go out and you're going to do all this, and I've been here a long time, and all we're doing is going the other direction. Because people don't want changes, well, we have to go back and look at what, what has happened to our town, what we're left living in this town. And what's going to be the benefits and where we're going, the days when I was going on this, we were going to put up factories and buildings, they're never going to happen. So it's fine, okay, so basically is, and if, if you're going to attract young people, we don't have jobs. But we could attract people that wants to have a nice home, maybe it's a retirement home, I don't know, I just, like you said. I don't want to discourage you from doing, because we do need to go and do it, but I'd hate to see you run out, hey, I've got money to do this, when daddy want the town wants to do.
So it's not, again, with everything we do, never be, I got a million dollars to develop, you know, the sidewalk. This may help you with like the sidewalks, we're talking about put sidewalks, whether we want to do that or not, as a town, we'll, we'll address that. This is what they can help you, and I understand, I do understand where you're coming from on your, on your view, like you, like I said, we're heavy ag overlay here. And these ag companies, these, you know, ag businesses we have, I, a lot of them, the thing is, we're pivoting into this, this new modern labor force, it's tech savvy, so. How do we provide an opportunity, maybe even just that one, bring them here and say, you can go work for, I'll say the Carlos Farms, and you're doing the techie, the crop manager. Because there's a whole AI platform out there for that, that's a whole different thing, and you have it where you work, you have this whole technological.
I can tell you, uh, and I think our town has changed to where, you know, I was thinking about it as a Russell, how you do that. Is, the other day, I was up flying the solar panels that we have in our town, we have to be the one town that actually produces more power. Renewable power than our population is, I like to know how much we have, and down the line, if, you know, I give up, if that's where we're going. I, if we give up land to put up more solar panels, there's nothing really wrong with that, you know?
That could be a valid thing, you say, well, yeah, we could say, if you build a house or you're renovating, if rooftop solar.
If you move to this town, we're, we're a hundred percent renewable town.
Those are offering knocking points to to market, so this is, this is a real, this is like a living, this is going to, there's a lot in.
We have a house in the center of town, pretty much was absentee in New York City for sixteen years, and one thing I've noticed, my. Family has noticed is the dramatic increase in the number of people that are with us now.
Yeah.
And that's geographic and demographic, and. The only thing I know from the private sector that's absolutely certain is change. We're consistently evolving.
Yeah.
And technology is rapidly creating molecular structures, whether you're in hard industry, software, finance, education. Increasingly, our town could, because of its beauty and its inherent beauty and its location, its people. Attract that new next generation, private sector um company, which doesn't, which is going to look a lot different. And the fact, it's going to look a lot different. Yeah, it's going to look, yeah, it's going to look a lot different, and it's coming, no matter whether we like it or not, and COVID, I think, certainly facilitated. The practicality of that, and you have also folks that think about um changing weather patterns and. I still don't know why people continue to go towards the beach in the south, yeah, right, as opposed towards us, but I've been thinking, in the longer term, if you're accepting that type of change. Moving north away from New York and Boston, we're going to continue to bring people, so. Just based on those two humble cents, I I I definitely support this, I think it's worth with a three-year shot. And you're a very motivated individual, you care about what you're doing out there, um, again, I thank you for your service to our country, and um. Um, so I I I'm for it, so I'll, if if we can have a vote on it.
One, one thing I wanted to add to is, one thing I put in there was the purpose of the state, we do that at Wyndham Regional, so right now, I'm going through every year, we have to adjust it, and that's one thing. The board will do, they'll bring back to you guys, and you guys will, so you know, what's your purpose for the year, what's your objectives, and I don't know if the other boards do this, I haven't looked, but. That's some food for thought, so you folks are better informed on where your boards and commissions are, so you know the answers, and you know, say, hey, wait a minute, we got. Too much going on in one lane here, can we, can we break that, so I think some more input from. I don't know, boards and commissions to you as select board members, would help you understand where where we are all, whatever he's working on. Now, we, you know, even if you look at it.
We make, moving along, we make a motion, the motion would be that we would go ahead and authorize this organization to be assembled for the ACCG. For term up to three years, then we can look at renewing after three years.
Yeah, I put that, and I actually came up with, because they have Wyndham Regional has their, and Wyndham County has their own development, so. I I came up with the acronym W C E C D, as we'll see, so it kind of tells us Westminster Commerce, so. Again, forgive me, I wrote silly too this morning, so.
Say that again, then I'll make it.
It's, it's right on, it's right on page one, um. Yeah, so I, I call it the Westminster Commerce and Economic and Community Development, so.
I'll move that, will you go ahead and authorize the assemble of the uh. Group called W C E C D. Operating up to how many members?
Seven members.
Up to seven members. With alternate terms to have a three-year. What's the word would be, three-year cycle, I guess.
What we'll do is revisit it in three years, we'll have a review of it in three years for the select board's reconsideration.
For a term of three years from this evening.
And the board will have a chair, a vice chair, and just like.
You can come.
They will have their, so three years will be the private chair, like same thing you did, so we'll just, that'll be structured at the first, once the people come together, here's your list, we can bring it back, they can structure.
And you're going to have minutes of bylaws and all.
We're going to follow, okay, everything's going to be on the up and up, because that's where we are.
Motion presented.
Second.
Um, motion is made and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye, aye, pose. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. New business, town report.
So the select board need to put together a report, we do every year, um, and the due date is December twenty-seventh.
Are you looking at me?
I am looking at you. Yeah, I haven't, I haven't started mine yet, and so.
Got it. Okay.
That's why you've got to be back on again.
Yeah, okay, then I'll draft something and send it around to everybody and. Okay.
She's an authorized professional.
She's the best.
Okay.
All right. First look at town meeting?
I would think we should table that until next meeting, because you have already. Said you're going to to revisit it by then, you know, possibly a series of articles that could possibly be looked at, so.
Very good, managers report.
I have nothing to report, other than uh, the offices of the town office will be closed. On the twenty-third and twenty-fourth of December, with Christmas on Saturday, and New Year's thirtieth and thirty-first. So we're working Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays of two weeks. And then in the next.
Lighting retreat.
Boards and commissions?
I have nothing to report, the, uh, just, just FYI, the planning commission is working on the new town plan.
Okay.
They're struggling with it, but they are working on it.
Any other business?
I have one thing.
Okay, Sue, hold on.
Um, so Pauline, Lake and I, mostly Pauline, have been working on um, wealth and package, they're all done.
Oh, wow.
Um, these are the folders, and then there's information um, that can be updated and added to, so if anybody knows of anyone. New moving to town, or is thinking about moving to town, um.
We've got them in the hands of realtors.
Uh, oh, that's a good idea.
That's normally what we give, we give so many to each one of the realtors, so when they're bringing people in to look at homes or something, they're handing them out to them. Because they ask, that's the ones that ask the questions normally.
Oh, good idea, okay. Start with Pauline about that, and. But anyway, she's done a great job, so.
Yes, Mr. Jones. But I know, she's working, we're on a website and been trying to get some funding for that, and so, just maybe we can think about it, if there's any way that the. AC, the art money committee can help fund that.
Fund.
The website, because it is a public, you're, you're using it as a public. I know you've asked for money, and I know, I know where we are kind of, so I'm just, I want to put it out for a conversation. I know you've asked for money, and I know, I know where we are kind of, so I'm just, I want to put it out for a conversation piece, and of course, I know it has to go in front of the committee as well. But I just wanted to let you know.
Website has been created. It's only just now maintaining it.
Uh, well, yeah, she's, it's not finished. The new one isn't up yet, but it's, but it's all done. It just needs to be migrated, and then the maintenance, we do have to.
We have the maintenance, so I just didn't worry.
Do we, do we allow a lot of websites when you go into the town? And then if you click on to, let's say, restaurants, and they click you to all the different websites you can go to. So it branches out. So if you're looking for food or like that, and they're all companies that are in the town of Westminster. So, are we allowed to do that?
Well, that I don't know. We talked, Pauline and I, about having like a business path at some point. Uh, but you know, that's something much bigger than just town offices. So it'll be something.
Something where you go to and you would say.
Right, I mean, that would be great. It's just a matter of.
A lot of the town websites, that's, I go, that's what I see.
Yeah, I just have to have a process for how people get on with them.
Is there any other business? Are there any comments from the public online? Nobody there?
Did a good job, Mark. Good job.
Well, um, want to wish everyone, we want to wish everyone a very happy and healthy and safe holiday season and new year, and uh thank everyone for all your work and support this year and being here tonight. And really, everyone have a wonderful holiday. Uh, that being said, our next meeting will be January twelfth at the firehouse.
And will we adjourn?
Oh, there's no Toby here to do that, huh?
Yeah, we'll need, we'll need a new person.
Jason seconded.
All those in favor.
I've never heard anybody attack or oppose to it.
Aye. Pose. Okay, have a blessed holiday, everyone.